Let's get moving, so call the meeting to order. If I can stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Any discussion? None heard, the agenda is approved. Arla will not be here tonight, she is out sick. So, we will move on to public comment. Do we have any public comments, Jackie? None heard? So our student board members, what comments do you guys got going on?
Do you want to go first?
Yeah, you can go first.
On Tuesday, we, like last week, I'm pretty sure, we held our first career in college expo with the whole school involved. So the junior seniors started out in the gym. And then the sophomores are in the auditorium listening to a speech. And then the freshmen were also in the commons listening to a speech. And we got the whole school involved and they were all a part of the expo. And it was very insightful, there was colleges, there was Puget Sound, Energy, there was PUD, everything. And then our sports are on fire. The fast pitch, the soccer, the baseball, the track, they're all kicking butt this season. That's really it.
Yeah, I would say our track team's doing really good. We might have to cancel a meet though due to transportation on Wednesday, so that kind of sucks. But leagues is coming up, I think it's a week from Thursday. And we have a lot of kids who are qualifying for leagues, hopefully they'll get to state this year.
Very good, wonderful. All right. Moving down to the consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda is written.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Student board members?
Aye.
All right, so the consent agenda is approved. Moving down, all right. We have the extracurricular collective bargaining agreement.
Yes, so the district and the North Mason Coaches Association completed their bargain for contract, multi-year contract. And that is included here. We are just asking that the board approve the contract as agreed.
All right. So, do I hear a motion approving the collective bargaining agreement with the extracurricular association?
I move that we approve the collective bargaining agreement between the district and the North Mason Extracurricular Association.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Student board members?
Aye.
Okay. All right, that is approved, all right. Moving on to the child nutrition presentation.
I set up there kind of a flyer. Our, I'm a little nervous, sorry. All of a sudden it hit me, I've been great all day. So I put our numbers down so you could see 22, 23. The first whole year was 149,963. Then it goes down to the next year. I didn't put it for 24, 25 because we don't have April, May, or June. But if you look over on the other side, that is from September till March. You can see every year we have gone up dramatically. We have way more student engagement, a lot more kids buying, or not buying but eating, which is really exciting. Because we are CEP, we are free, so why isn't everybody coming and eating? So I put some of our new items, we've got a Korean barbecue bowl, lasagna rollups, hot honey beef tostada, or hot honey beef and broccoli bowl, Caesar flatbread, Salisbury steak, euros, chicken pot pie, flautas, chicken and waffles, chicken fried steak, beef storganoff, and beef dippers. It's a little bit of comfort food in there, you know? We're geared, some challenges have been the cuts from the USDA. That hurt us because what would happen is, is I get money, entitlement money. And then from that, the USDA would give small farms money. So they would pay for our, the product, and we would pay for processing. So let's say it was an apple, so I would pay for just the processing of the apple and the USDA funds, grants would cover the apples. That's not anymore, they took that away, so now I have to cover both the product and the processing. So that does cut into my budget. Our, my, you know, my food budget, you think going to the grocery store is rough? You should have my budget. When I have to do my bills every month of how much I spend on food, it's a lot. So we do what we can, we're doing a lot more scratch cooking. So we're actually going back, we have recipes back from the eighties and seventies, are heart healthy? And we're tapping into some of those. And because we're also being restricted, next year it's 10% for the Buy American, which will affect some of our products, like apple juice. We'll have to cut back because apple juice is grown here, but it's processed in China. So then I have to watch how much I do. 10% of all my products can only 10% be out of the United States. Obviously bananas don't grow here, pineapples and things. So I have, and sugars, my sugars and my salts are going down too. So it is a lot of restrictions and we're working within the confines of them. But we're gearing up for the non-congregate feeding program, meaning we're going to be feeding the community for free. So far for the non-Hispanic speaking, or the non-Spanish speaking is, I think we have 139 kids signed up who would like to receive meals per week. They'll come up just like COVID, come up on a day. On Thursdays, we're going to do it at Sand Hill, and on Fridays, we're going to do it at the high school. And they just come up and grab a bag, it's going to have five breakfasts, five lunch, and they can get one gallon of milk per child. So I ask them, do you want, if you have four kids, you want four gallons, they'll tell me how much they actually want. So I will be partnering with the church, the coalition of churches for volunteers to help with this. And there's some grants I'm going to apply for, for that, to help with cold holding and maybe some canopies because we're going to be standing outside. And then Sunbucks is another program. It's an EBT card that people, families can get if they qualify for free or reduced, or they're for direct cert. They get $120 per child for the summer. So that will help families be able to provide some food costs during the summertime.
Very good.
I hope you like our cookies. There's a lot of good stuff we're making. I don't know if you guys have any questions.
No, I will tell you that from some of the stuff that's been sent up here for the meetings that we've had, it has been spectacular. I know I've got lots of comments from community members that are there. Super happy that we're feeding them number one and said it's really good, so it's been awesome. And I've been hearing the same thing for my kids.
Good, good. I take that very personal. I grew up in Bellevue, so I want a kind of a bougie. Curry and beef bowl and stuff, but yeah, I, I'm not going to give anything out I'm not going to eat.
Yeah. Mine's more of a comment than a question. I don't know where the hot honey craze came from, but like, it is going over very well with those that I know. So a way to be dialed in.
Yeah, they have it on chips and all sorts of stuff. So we thought it'd be fun with the beef and add some broccoli and make a bowl out of it. So, well, good, I'm glad you go to it, yes.
Do you anticipate, or does OSPI anticipate any further cuts? Because I think that was something that we expressed concern about. If cuts continue at the federal level, we really want to keep feeding our community. And if, with the levy failing, like...
So far, right now, I have CEP for three more years. Because you have to have direct certs for 40%, qualify for direct cert if you know what direct certs are. It's Medicaid or basic health, or Medicaid and food stamps. So 40% of our kids, I was at 40.25, so I barely made it, but I got it for four more years. I've heard that they're going to try and make it that it's 60% have to be at that level. And that, that will hurt, that will hurt us. I may have to go in and decide what schools are going to be free and what's going to go back to paid. We do have, there's a few other bills that we could work with, because I really want to keep it free. But ultimately, right now, it's out of my hands, but for the next three years, we are, we do have the CEP status.
And we do, there is some uncertainty about decisions that could be made through the budget team process in Washington DC right now. And we're just having to keep an eye on if that will have immediate impact on what comes to states.
Right.
We don't have 100% answer yet, but for right now, it looks better than it did a few weeks ago for food service.
And I appreciate that, I know though we hear concerns about equity between our two elementary schools. So I mean, that would be at least letting my directors know, like that's a concern of mine is if we have one school with and one school without.
Right.
Yeah, unfortunately, I've seen that at a lot of districts, where they have to choose.
And it, it could depend on, you know, the demographics in a specific school, so. And it gets really complicated for like McKenna and her team, because if we had some schools or a school on CEP and other schools on the traditional paid and free and reduced, that we can't afford that many extra people to keep track of two different systems. And so they'll be working really intensely to support that. So hopefully we'll be able to maintain staying on one system and staying on the system that we are. Because I think since we made the transition several years ago, the benefits have been really, really strong for our kids and our community.
I also worry if we do go back to paying, that our engagement is going to be way down. Like half, maybe.
Yeah. I appreciate you, thank you.
Oh, thanks McKenna.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. I don't think we need a recess because we're already down. We will move on to our board link in development with the superintendent update.
Yeah, I wanted to just do a little bit about, a little more about budgets this year. So just what we're all so excited about. But the legislature did finish on time on Sunday evening. And we do, are getting information about what the impacts for state funding will be on our budgets as we go forward. And unfortunately, we didn't see, we started out this session with a lot of optimism and a lot of really good partnerships and conversations around the things that public schools were asking for from our legislative partners in order to fund, fully fund the programs that we have so that the legislature would meet its requirement to amply fund, its paramount duty to amply fund basic education in the state. So we, you're going to be hearing about the multiple billion dollars that they increased state funding for schools by. But the reality is about 85% of the amount that they increased our funding by was funding that they had to do because it was already in statute for statutory raises in costs. So it wasn't new money, it wasn't addressing the requests that we made. So of the requests that we made, we're seeing to fully fund special education. We had the big three, special education, MSOCs, and transportation. They did nothing for transportation at all. They funded MSOCs. So we needed, to bring us up to catching up for all of the inflation over the last several years, we needed about $285 per student. We got 35 per student K-12 with, and we needed more also at the secondary level, but we didn't get what we needed there. We got an additional $4 on top of that for nine through 12. So they'll talk about $85 per student that they gave us, but part of that was for the IPD, for the cost of living, so it's not real. So the only new money that we got was the 35 or the 4, so we did not come anywhere close. So we have more work to do next session. People are going to gear up and replan and start over and go back and have conversations. And in special education, we needed about a billion dollars. And it looks like the total, I don't want to get this wrong, but I think the total that we're getting is about 275 million. So a little over a quarter of the request, not for us, for the whole state. The face you made at me. No, so about a quarter of what we requested. And there are some good things, the cap on special education, the cap for total percent of students, that has gone away. There are some new rules around the safety net that you can apply for, for excess costs for specific student needs that are helpful. The multipliers per student have gone up a little bit. So we're moving in the right direction there, but we have more work to do. So, you know, we want to be sure when we see or talk to our legislators that we thank them for the work that they did and remind them that there's a lot more to do. We did not see what we needed to see. And there, there are things that we didn't talk about that we're looking at to things like the costs for when staff are sick, but you know, substitute costs. So it's very, very interesting to me that we have a requirement, and it's a good one, I'm not arguing with that, that staff typically, not in all of our bargaining units across the state, people get 12 sick days a year. And you can, they can add up if you don't use them, and that's great. Because if you don't need them and then down the road you need a lot more days, they're there and they're banked for you. But unfortunately, people have the ability to take 12 sick days a year. But districts get funded for people to take three, if they're teachers, and not funded at all for sick days for other employees. And so one of the things that's going to be coming up is a much bigger deal in the next session. We still need the big three, but that's one of the things we have to talk about too. We have to talk about funding substitute costs. Because for many reasons, substitute usage and costs are going up across the state. And it's, you can't cover it with other dollars anymore. When we're using, if we have levy dollars, when we're using that to cover other things that the state should be paying for, when we're using the few, you know, basic ed dollars and levy dollars to cover insurance and more keeping the lights on and utilities, there just are fewer dollars to cover things. So those are some of the things that we're going to be talking about. You know, I think it's, it's a good time for our staff and our students and our families for us to all work together on how we're going to talk to our legislators about what we need them to do to support schools. So that's what I meant to say.
Okay. Well, we're moving on. Dan, it's your time to take center stage here. Give us the budget update.
Okay, very good. Good evening, board. I'm Dan King, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. And I am here to present the budget status report. And we'll begin with our other funds. So I have the fund balances for the Capital Projects Fund. We ended on March 31st with $174,870 in that fund. Our Debt Service Fund ended the month of March with $1,170,242. Our ASB Fund ended the month with $414,906. And the Transportation Vehicle Fund ended with $186,346. Now we do have a bus on order that we'll be paying for soon. It's going to bring that fund balance down. We'll just see a dramatic decrease probably in the next month or two of about $160,000. So that's because we have a bus on order. We're excited about the bus, it's a wheelchair bus, but it has the capacity to hold three wheelchairs. It's a little bit longer, but it's smaller than our big buses. But it'll be a really great addition to our bus fleet. Some of our routes have more than two students who require a wheelchair for further mobility. So having this bus that can hold three wheelchair riders will be a really, it'll really help us out with our routing and scheduling, so. Okay, we're going to move on to the attendance. Now the attendance here is our April attendance at the beginning of the month. So our April attendance, including Running Start, was 2,259.78 students. The year-to-date average, and that year-to-date average is October through April. We're not counting the September in our average because we don't have our Running Start count in September. So when we count October through April, the year-to-date average FTE is 2,282.36. And so even though our enrollment has gone down a little bit in the last two months, we're just under our revised budget FTE. Just a little over one student below the 2,283.55, which was our revised budget. Our April TTK was 34, we've been solid at 34 all year, which is a good thing because we'll be able to continue TTK at the current enrollment next school year, so. Our total enrollment with Running Start and TTK together is 2,293.78. And so that concludes the budget status and enrollment for the other funds. And let's move on to our general fund. Our general fund, this is through March 31st. I know here we are at the end of April. But I want to have complete, complete month data, and we don't have a complete month, we don't have April wrapped up. So even though our board meetings are at the end of the month, our data is over three weeks old. But it's, it's, it's fine because it's showing our progress as we go through the school year. So beginning with revenues, starting on the top left there on that, you can see that radio dial. Total revenues actual year-to-date, we're at 55.55% of our budgeted revenues. We projected we'd be at 55.74. For local revenues, we're at 52.53%, we projected we'd be at 50.57. State revenues, we were at 57.41% of our budgeted revenues, projected to be at 56.28. And our federal revenues, 37.58%, we projected to be at 56.34. The top three revenue sources include our apportionment. So through March, we had received $14,396,768 in our general apportionment. Special purpose revenues at $6,020,317. And our local property taxes through March, $1,910,671, which is close to half of our annual local property tax collection. We should receive a pretty substantial property tax collection this month. As, you know, and it'll show up in my next county treasuries report, which I'll receive around 5th of May. And then the next slide here shows our big picture for our revenues. Our current year-to-date general fund revenues amount to $24,454,249, which is just under our projected, we projected we'd be at $24,537,563. However, the projected revenues were based on our budgeted FTE for enrollment. And we made an enrollment revision back in October. So I'd say since we made that revision, we've done, I think, a pretty good job of seeking new revenues through grants and other ways to keep our revenues as high as possible. So that's, that's good news. Moving on to the expenditures. So on the top left, we have our projected year-end balance as a percentage of our budgeted expenditures. So at the end of March, we're at 4.31%. And this is up from the previous month, in our March board meeting, we were at 4.11. In our February board meeting, we were at 2.56. So we're moving in the right direction. We've been putting some things together in place to keep our budget as whole as possible and to keep our fund balance going in the right direction to increase each month, so. Our total expenditures actual year-to-date, we were at 57.43% of our budgeted expenditures. We projected that we'd be at 58.3. So we're spending a little less than we had planned in the budget. Again, because of the different measures we're putting in place to cut costs, save money, not spend as much, and hold back where we can. Our salaries benefits actual year-to-date, we were at 56.04, we projected that we'd be at 57.63. And our basic ed actual year-to-date, 57.29, we projected we'd be at 50.53. Top three expenditures to date through March. Basic ed, $11,742,591. Our district-wide support at $4,038,510. And special education state, $3,095,173. On the next slide, we have the big picture for our expenditures. Our current year-to-date general fund expenditures on the bottom there, $25,570,364, which is below what we projected, where we'd be at the end of March at $25,959,161. Moving on to the next slide. This just kind of gives a little bit more detail on our special education budget. So that top line is our state special ed. And you can see the expenditures match what I just shared, the $3,095,173 of our allocation for the year, which was $4,771,970. And our federal special ed, and those are two grants for IDEA. Our expenditures were at $221,783 of our allocation of $549,444. So together, when you add those up, you can see that our total expenditures, the difference between our expenditures and revenues is $348,181. And let's move on to the next slide, please. Something doesn't look right about the math there. I think I might have made an error in that. And I am so sorry, it just doesn't look right. Because when I look at this, the difference between revenues and expenditures is about $160,000, so. I'll make that adjustment and send in that correction. Okay, the last slide. This shows our fund balance through March. And our projections, April through August. Now, we've talked about this graphic at previous board meetings and our concern for our fund balance in May and June. May, a few months back, was at minus $82,909. And last month, at our board meeting, it was $606,729. And now we're at $693,817. So we're heading in the right direction there. Now, May has a very low apportionment, it's a small percentage, I think that's the 6% month. So that's the reason why that's a difficult month. May and June both are very small percentage-wise apportionments. The June, which still remains a concern, but we've got a plan to keep moving this above zero. In our February board meeting, that was at minus $1,488,601. Our March board meeting last month, it was at $798,964. And now it's at minus $711,876. One of the things that's really interesting about the way we get apportionment, and I say interesting in a good way, I guess, that we get 22.5% of our apportionment in July and August. It's kind of like the, hey, you know, we'll just pay that later, you know, when you're not even offering. It's kind of like that, hey, you know, we'll just pay that later, you know, when you're not even operating with students. So we're going to shift some of that apportionment to receive it in June to help keep that above zero. And that is a very, more and more common thing that school districts are doing in these financial times to make sure that you're more evenly distributing your apportionment across the school year.
So Dan, you will have a resolution for the board to do that at the May meeting, is that correct?
That's correct. So we'll have a resolution. It does require a resolution. It's not a super complicated process, but districts are asked to work with their ESDs and required to get approval from their school board and then submit that to OSPI. And what they do is they redistribute, reallocate your apportionment so that you get a bigger percentage when you need it. So we're going to need it in June. So that means we get a little bit less in July and August, too. We have to pay it back. But it's just giving it to us when we, giving that apportionment money to us when we need it.
Gotcha, okay.
Our projected year-end fund balance has also been going up a little bit each month, so that's good, too. Back in February, it was at one million, one hundred forty-one thousand, four fourteen. Last month, I reported we were at one million, eight thirty-one, oh five one. And now it's showing that we'll end the year at one million, nine hundred eighteen thousand, one thirty-nine. And I still expect that to go up even more as we continue to do grant claims and things like that. So these, these last couple of months, we should be seeing some change as we continue on to the school year and through August.
Can you go back up to slide one of the presentation? Not that one, the one below that, there you go. So we talked about, at the levy meeting, we talked about the state forests and timber money.
Yes.
So is that those two lines of the state forests and the timber excise tax? Or which one of those is the one tied to the dollars that if we were not to pass a levy, that we would lose?
So there's a state forest. And then there's also not showing here because it doesn't quite, we haven't received enough to quite fall into the top ten. But as a revenue source, is our federal as well. So we get federal forest. I think, if I remember correctly, I just saw the report the other day, we're getting fourteen thousand dollars. Yes.
Yeah, but we do benefit most from those two funds typically from state forests because we have more state forest land in our district than federal forest land. And that is the one that, but well, both of those are tied to the levy. Because the reason you get money from those state trusts is because the, we can't collect property tax on state or federal forests. Those aren't owned by individuals or companies. And so in lieu of being able to collect the property tax, you get the, the state trust funds. However, another thing that the budget did, or the legislature did in this budget, they haven't touched the state forest trust funds yet. But they reverted back to the rules from about two thousand fourteen to when they give a district in the future, not this check he's talking about, but when a district earns federal forest money going forward, they will subtract the same amount from your apportionment. Now, they don't do that when you get levy dollars, but that's okay. They, they are going to penalize districts again for, by taking away part of our apportionment because we get the forest dollars. Which we get because we can't get something else.
So another thing, though, that's contingent on passing a levy and having a levy is our impact aid. So if we do not pass a levy, we lose those revenues as well. Because that, again, it's to make up for what we're not receiving from taxpayers through property taxes. So if there's no tax, then they're not responsible to give us that impact aid.
And that's not the impact fees that we charge developers, but it's the impact aid that districts receive for federally impacted things in our district, whether it's having reserve, native reservations or military bases or percentage of kids with special needs. There are different, different groups that qualify you for some impact aid from the federal government. And then we lose that, too.
Dan, I just have one question, maybe for this, and you might already be planning on doing this, but for our sake, like a year from now, when we're looking at this month-end balance, if we do do the resolution next month, that we maybe add some sort of asterisk or narrative here to remind us of why all of a sudden June isn't such a hit for us after it's been every single year, just so that we stay on track with our data.
That's a good point.
That's a good point.
Very good. Well, thank you very much, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Dan.
All right. Legislative rep report. I think you kind of gave us a good oversight of that earlier, and Arlo's not here tonight, so.
She did send out that little email. I don't have it here in front of me, but she had a few updates in there. It was very similar to what you shared, but.
Right. One thing I would like to add, though, because Dan touched on it. Currently, we have twenty-two point five percent of our budgeted funds for the previous school year coming in the following July and August. We were battling very hard in the legislature this year because there was talk of taking more money away from the winter months and adding more money to August. And so that, that scarcity of funds during the school year was going to get worse and be replaced with those funds in August. At the very last minute, the legislature did not do that. So we are staying at the level we're at right now, which we would still rather see evenly balanced over the years. But at least the unevenness of when you receive funds didn't get worse like it sounded like it could. So that was a plus with the end of the session. Okay.
All right. Let's go here.
District calendar.
Yep. Moving on to the district calendar. So I will entertain a motion to approve the monitoring, or if I, yeah, to approve the monitoring report on ER eleven.
I move that we approve the monitoring report.
Okay.
ER eleven.
Any discussion about the monitoring report?
I would just like to add that we, as you read in the monitoring port, report, through board policy, we try to keep about eighteen months ahead on approving the calendar. We had to make some last-minute adjustments, but we will have the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar in the May board meeting for approval so that we'll meet that, that deadline of roughly eighteen months.
Very good. All right, all in favor of finding the superintendent compliance of ER eleven? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that moves on. So the policies reviewed last month, is there any further discussion about ER twelve or ER six?
I do have a question about ER twelve. I'm sorry, apologize if I didn't catch this earlier. We have a revision date of June two thousand twelve. Have there been updates to RCWs or WACS that have to do with discipline?
Yeah, we, we do those revisions in the student, the two thousands of the board policies.
Okay.
So this is, this policy is about how I report to you about what we do. And then those policies are about what we do.
What, how the actual building level.
And actually, we, in the last four or five years, I think, maybe more, have had revisions every single year and probably expect a few more this summer, too. But in particularly this year, our Chris, Turner and our assistant principals have been working really hard on some things to make the way things work more efficient and smoother for staff in the buildings when they're reporting and then when, when actions are being taken. One of the things that they're doing is really cleaning up our system for reporting because we've had different codes being used or not used and things get confusing. So that's getting cleaned up. And then they've also really looked at, are we applying the right responses to student behaviors and working on updating that? So there will be a lot of update with that going into next year. You kind of don't want to change that in the middle of the year in the student handbook and stuff. But they've been doing some great work and we've been discussing some of that also with our NMEA leadership. So we have good things coming forward.
Okay. And again, apologize. Refresher for ER four. I know that we talked about lowering the minimum fund balance because of the levy not passing. But can you refresh my, right?
ER four, ER two, ER four?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah. No, I didn't, wasn't two that one. That was a discussion on that one.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Sorry, I was looking at, you were looking at equity. Yeah, okay.
All right.
I will wait. Okay.
So, moving on to ER four.
Well, can I just go back to ER twelve just real quick? Last time, I, I felt like our discussion went towards having, continuing to have better data. It seems like it's improved just in my two times that I've seen them report on the student contact and discipline. I've been impressed the way they've been more concise and had additional data for us. It just, as I'm in the supermarket or at the sporting event, student conduct and discipline continues to be that, hey, what are we going to do about this or that? And it's nice to be able to reference some of those good things that we're doing. So I just want to encourage us to continue to look at that. And you talk about the good things coming down the pipeline. I just want to make sure we socialize those so that more and more people are aware of the changes that are occurring.
Yes, so, and staff will, made notes of all the comments and are including that in their planning from the board. But because there will be changes, they will have to be shared with families and students. They'll be in the handbooks. There will be a process and a, a campaign to make sure that everybody knows what the expectations are and, and what the changes are, so. But I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you.
So now, let's go to the ER four planning revision. So I am, will entertain a motion to approve ER four budget planning update.
And for clarification, that was just the portion that was in red?
Yes.
Okay.
So like, we'll approve it, then we'll have discussion and then.
Then we make a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just need to make a motion.
I make the motion to approve.
All right. So discussion on ER four. Now let's go.
Okay. Now you have a question.
Um, if you can refresh my memory about how, if we, in lowering our minimum fund balance to give us some wiggle room with not passing the levy between four and six percent, how long would that last us? About how many months could we pay the bills?
Well, four to six percent is not a whole month anymore. Eight to ten is. So that's why the board has, over time, raised it. But there are a number of reasons to have our requirement in policy be more in line with what we, we see in actuality right now. That, that affects things like your rating if you need to go out and get some, you know, do a bond or other kinds of ratings, you know, if we needed to take on non-voted debt, for example. So that's the reason we put in a temporary adjustment only because we find ourselves temporarily in a place we didn't expect to be because of two things. Because of the levy loss as well as to the unexpected dip in enrollment. So we're still growing. We're, we just grew a lot less than we thought we were going to this year. So we're being much more conservative in our plan for enrollment going forward in the budget that we're planning. And we're planning a budget that will revert you back to that eight to ten percent over the, by the end of the following year, by, over next school year.
So really, this is just.
This is really to get us through.
Four to six percent for the next.
Four months.
Four months.
Right. I just, I want there to, I want that to be clear to the community because then if it continues of like, oh, why is all this going back up? No, no, we lowered it, but if something happened, we couldn't even pay the bills for a month.
Yeah, we'd be in a really tight spot. We'd have to say, we're not going to pay this bill this month. We're gonna, you know, and we have to pay our people, so.
So, but when that number fluctuates, when we're able to get back up, I just wanted to be clear that like, people don't think, oh, we, you know, right, up there for no reason.
And I think that's a really good question. So right now, on our average, an average caught, you know, set of checks written a month for payroll and our other expenses is between eight and nine percent, really. So closer to a little bit above eight, a little bit under nine. So having that eight to ten percent cushion is an important place for us to be. The other thing, though, as districts around the state, just for you to be thinking of going forward, because you may decide to do something different with this language sometime in the future. Because of the, the continued uncertainty about impacts at both the federal and the state level on school district budgets, districts are starting to look at their fund balance or talk about their budgeting process in terms of days of cash on hand instead of a fund balance. And it's really two different ways of saying the same thing. But I think it's important for us to start getting comfortable about thinking about it both ways. Because really, what we're saying is to get us back to that eight to ten percent gets us to about a little over a thirty-day cash on hand that we can pay our payroll for, if the, for some reason, the state didn't pay us our apportionment for a month, we would just keep paying everything. Right now, at that four to six percent, we would have to prioritize payroll and tell our other people, well, we're going to have to get to you the next month. So we don't want to be there and we, we want to keep this fund balance. So right now, also with apportionment, with that four to six percent fund balance, as long as the apportionment in all those months comes in the way that it does, we'll have that percentage that we need to pay that and keep building our fund balance back so that we get to that place where if we missed a payment from the state, we would have a month's grace in there. That's where we're trying to get to.
Well, I think it's important that we find a way to show that to the community. I mean, even if they aren't filling this room up because it shows how this district has expressed and exercised fiscal restraint while other surrounding districts have not had that success.
Yeah.
So.
So this, so what we're saying is this budget planning document will change that to four to six percent. I mean, the one thing I would like is do we want to put any language in here to put a meter on how long we can be down?
I did. It's in there.
Okay, sorry.
I said.
Oh, budget for a year, I got you.
Yeah.
My eyes are.
I gave you two years, just in case something I'm foreseeing, but because the one is this year that we're currently in. And by the end of next year, we shouldn't need this language anymore.
So are we comfortable with that?
It's not comfortable.
No, I know, it's not comfortable, but I mean, I, like.
But I mean, I, we don't.
I think this gives us some flexibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate your honest, I mean, your candidness with that because it's not a comfortable spot to be in. But if we haven't passed a levy, then we're literally doing the best we can with what we have. And this allows us a little more flexibility, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the thing is it's the flexibility to have. We want to. We want to see this in the eight to ten percent realm, um, no matter what at all, you know, what we're trying to go for. But at least this gives us a little bit of wiggle room, so.
And I, and I do think also for our messaging, not only for the, for the school board and for the district, but that seeing it as cash on hand and in days, that, for some reason, I feel like that brings it home a little bit more to help us and to help communicate just where we're at.
And I think that phrase that you used, Dano, which I think personally is horrible, but we might have to prioritize paychecks. Like, that's. But that may be a way of coupling with days of cash on hand is the way to get the message across that we, we, we can't, we can't meet the needs of our staff and our students without this levy.
Yep, and I think that's where we should, we've got to make sure everything's true. Um, and we really communicate a lot of that when we're out there for the levy, so. All right, so any other discussion? Okay, well, I'm all in favor of approving ER four, the budget planning update policy, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, that goes. So, moving on, any other public comment, Jagi?
No.
Okay. Uh, so the good of the order, let's start with our student board members. What you guys got?
Um, my AP tests are coming up soon. There is uh AP World on next Wednesday, AP US History on Friday, which I'm taking, and then AP Language and Composition the following Wednesday on the fourteenth. Um, prom is, prom tickets are on sale, it is on May tenth at Vermont and Admiral Theater. Um, the senior class has a lot of events coming up, we got the slow day and the skip day and um things that we may not have done. But it's a great opportunity for the eighth graders to come up and introduce themselves into the high school and like begin their high school and beyond careers, because I know that the staff in like the counseling room is planning a lot of events for those eighth graders when we may or may not be there. Um, and it's just a great time, and we're excited for graduation.
Very good.
Did you get asked to prom?
Uh, no, I'm not allowed to go.
I got asked to prom, that attracted me, and then I, yeah, I asked my friend, you, do you guys know Mr. Beavers?
Yes, I gotta see him, it was great.
His daughter, me and his daughter are best friends, so we ended up asking each other to prom. But like, I didn't know that she was gonna ask me, and she didn't know I was gonna ask her, it was so funny, because we asked each other like an hour apart. Really funny, yeah, I'll listen how prom goes, but um, I don't think you have anything else to say?
Yeah, just to continue the, the budget theme tonight, but I would like to um ask that the board consider having a study session um in the evening prior to our May board meeting, to look at um budget adjustments that we have to make outside of people. So about those maintenance supplies and operating cost kinds of adjustments that we can make to help us tighten that budget for next school year.
So do we want to do that at like uh five thirty?
At five thirty.
Does that work for you guys? Coming in a little early?
I, I can't make that board meeting.
There is a reminder, Eric, on the agenda that we need to look at May twentieth being our next board meeting.
Yeah, that too.
That's right, okay. Get to that, all right, so, is that all you had?
That's all I had.
Okay, I'll go. Um, so, been really cool down at the fast pitch, we started a new thing this year of people throwing out the first pitch um at the games. Uh, the new superintendent was down and threw out the first pitch. Um, our head coach of our girls' basketball team went down there and threw out the first pitch. And then today, we had uh Ms. Olson from the high school came down with the craziest energy I've ever seen. It was so awesome, she actually pitched it full-blown underhand, it was awesome. Um, the girls were super excited, and we've got a couple other coming up, uh first pitches to throw out, but it's really been a huge success of getting folks down there and getting folks excited before the game. Um, so it's been a lot of fun, so, and they won tonight, so. All good, it was a heartbreak, a heart attack, but it was okay.
No, Ms. Olson was talking about it in pre-couch, she's like, I don't know who this Eric Youngberg is, but he's asking me to throw the first pitch.
Oh, it was so, it was like beyond awesome, so, yeah, is that it? What you got?
Um, I actually don't have a whole lot, other than I do want to give um the high school some major kudos, because the um event that you were talking about, Emily, I was really impressed with that, breaking down the grade levels and having them um exposed to information about their school career, career after high school, like all of that, I was just really impressed with that, I mean, we are starting at freshman level um and working the way up and getting them to start thinking about those things, instead of waiting until like eleventh or twelfth grade. Um, and I saw the um news on Parents Square about the dual credit session that we'll have at the conferences. And again, I don't think, we have a lot of students and families that understand all the options they have. Um, and so I really appreciate, and I spoke with, you know, Steve Hackett about these um, these opportunities for our students to learn more. And so I really appreciate um the high school getting that together, and, and I think it's gonna be really beneficial. So that was it.
Cool, Nick?
Let's see, so, the big one I want to talk about is graduation, but before that, if we're getting close to graduation, that means we've got another year almost under our belts, where parents and teachers have kept their stuff together, for lack of a better term, in a very difficult environment. Um, so kudos to parents and teachers, but what I wanted to say is just like, I, I had the epiphany this weekend as I sat there and I was talking to a band member that just received a, uh, just decided where they're going to school. And I sat there and I'm like, wait a minute, I've been in this community like eighteen years, I held you when you were a baby. And then I started thinking about the other ones that are graduating this year, and I was just like, holy moly, there's a whole boatload of youth that I have seen grow up, and now they're leaving for college, and like, I, I would think I would just feel old, but I was just overwhelmed by how proud I was with them, of seeing them. I mean, almost all of them have identified where they're gonna be going to school. There's a couple that are still working on whether they're gonna make it over that hump to graduate, but just, just so awesome to see this excitement that's out there right now. And just proud of our students and what they've accomplished, and, and the teachers and parents that have helped them get to that point, so.
Great, all right, moving on to the board self-assessment. Arla is not here, so I will take care of it for this evening. So general meeting behavior, um, I'm gonna mark us as satisfactory for all the categories. Um, for the governance principles, review, I'm gonna mark us on yes for all of these, but we didn't make any changes. We will mark that is not applicable, but everything else is yes, and overall, we are satisfactory. Uh, our next board meeting, we're changing it due to Memorial Day. So we will um have it on the Tuesday, May twentieth, here in the boardroom at six thirty, and there will be a study session prior to that at five thirty.
I won't be there, so I just want to make sure we have a quorum.
We should have a quorum, because I know that Arla.
Didn't Arla say yes?
Yeah, Arla said yes.
And that works for you, Nick?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, make it work.
All righty, so, I will call the meeting to adjourn. Thank you guys for being here.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys.